Good evening. The Dixie County School Board Public Hearing Meeting is now in session. For the record, I would like to recognize that all School Board members are present, as well as Tanya Baker, Board Clerk, Scott Mullins, School Board Attorney, and Mrs. Robinson, Division Superintendent. At this time, would you please stand with me for the Fledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, we have an agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, we have a revision to the agenda. We would like to recommend the addition of the agenda item, construction notification, please.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All hearing members, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our first agenda item is the construction notification. Mrs. Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Board members. As the School Board is aware, we received notification last week of a delay in the delivery of a piece of equipment called a switchgear, which the delay of this equipment will delay, will impact the opening of the new elementary school in August of 2022. This evening, we have Mr. Ellsworth with Skanska and Mr. Abram Quisenberry with Construction, Quisenberry Construction, and they're here in attendance to present this information to the School Board. And so I'd like to ask them if they would please come to the podium. Good evening, gentlemen. Is your microphone?
May I turn it on?
And just give it just a moment, Mr. Ellsworth. Okay.
And just speak right into it, sir. Thank you.
Tess, okay. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for inviting us here on this nice sunny afternoon. I have, like Ms. Robinson said, I have Abe and Quisenberry with Quisenberry's Construction, and together, we're going to give an update on the elementary school. As you all know, we have been giving updates for many, many months on the progress of the new elementary school, and it's all been positive. And it was positive up until about a week and a half, two weeks ago, in which we found out we have a bit of a setback. And I was thinking, driving on the way over, about a setback, and I thought about a quote from Mike Tyson, who said something in effect of, "We had a good plan until we got punched in the mouth." And I feel like we've been punched in the mouth a little bit unexpectedly. And our situation, and both of us will talk about the situation a little bit, but we, or Quisenberry's found out from their electrical supplier a little less than two weeks ago, I think it was.
I think it was actually two weeks ago, about five minutes ago.
Five minutes ago, late, late on an afternoon, and found out that a main piece of electrical equipment called a switchgear, that it was not going to ship this week like it was supposed to. It was supposed to ship by Friday and be here next week, and it would actually not be received until September. And, which is a big deal, because if you don't have a switchgear, that means you don't have permanent power. That means you don't fire up the mechanical units, and you don't get to condition the air and install finishes in the building. And there's approximately about four more, four months of work to do after you install that switchgear, correct?
Yes, currently scheduled.
So, you know, the plan was, and I know Quisenberry's has worked aggressively with her trade contractors, that once that switchgear was delivered next week, that they would be done in August, and that was the plan, up until a little, two weeks ago. So, when Abe notified me of the situation, the first thing I did is I contacted an internal group with Skanska called Supply Chain Strategy Team, and they're a nationwide group that keeps track of what's happening in the construction market and long lead items. And because we're a builder too, we try to make sure we're getting our materials on time. And so I scheduled a call with them and Abe and told them of our situation, and they quickly said, yep, fully aware of that situation. It's happened to everybody across the country. And the supplier you're talking about, Eaton, has just gave notice to everybody that if you're expecting a switchgear in April, you're now not going to get it till September, October, because they can't get all the pieces. So it is a nationwide issue, and there's really nothing that anybody can do about it at this point. So, so we validated that Quisenberry's did everything they were supposed to do. They ordered, or actually, we all ordered the equipment back in September of last year. Was told it would be here in early 2023. I've got copies of emails where they have handed the supplier to say, "Are we going to get it when we're supposed to get it?" And up and through March, they said, "April 22nd, it'll ship, and you'll get it by April 27th." Up until when we bugged, when you guys bugged them two weeks ago, and they said, "Well, that was the date until, until now, and now it's September." And the concern is that they didn't guarantee it to be in September. So, with all that said, there's, you know, it's reasonable to assume that unless a switchgear shows up next week, the school will not open in, in August. And there's no guarantee. We may get a switchgear in September. And you can't, it may be early in the spring. We're hopeful we get it in September, which means the school can be completed early in 2023, and, which is actually about the same time the addition is supposed to complete. And we don't see any issues. You can help validate this. Any issues with the addition?
Yeah, and guys, this is obviously a very fluid situation, and we're trying to work, work through all these issues. But, you know, as Curtis said, we just had a subcontractor meeting just a few weeks ago with our team to, you know, push this thing to the finish line and accelerate while we can, add some resources. And I think we had a good plan together, and we're on pace to do that. And then we just kind of got the rug pulled out from underneath us two weeks ago. So, once we validated that this was indeed going to be a delay, we started working immediately, tried to find ways to mitigate that. So, I think you may have a letter in your packet outlining some options. One is a quick ship option for some, some switchgear that they kind of pull off the shelf and change some components. It's not exactly what we specified and designed around, but with this system, we can maybe get switchgear in six to 12 weeks versus sometime in September, which again, is not a guaranteed date. My fear is that we get to September, and they say it's going to be January, February. And this is totally, you know, outside of our control. But we are pursuing those options. We're trying to do everything we can to minimize these impacts and just rearrange the schedule, get, get creative with our workflows to try to get this done as quick as we can. It's, it's extremely discouraging to be this close and to, and to see it and to be planning for it and, and just to get this news. But I just want the Board to know that we're doing everything we can and with, in conjunction with Skanska, trying to find ways to get us in here as quick as we can. So, the situation's fluid. We're, we're working through it. As quick as we get a lead on, on a way to improve it, we're, we're pursuing that to the best of our ability, so.
And Mr. Quisenberry, the packet, the letter is in a packet, and each board member has that information.
Yeah. And just to give you some, some background, I'm paraphrasing a little bit from that packet. But when we first started talking about this project back in February of last year, we were given an eight to 10-week lead time on switchgear. We got an update in February that it would be April 22nd. So essentially, it went from eight to 10 weeks to 20 to 30 weeks, which we were okay with. We had that incorporated into our schedule. But this thing has just been condensed to the point where, you know, we're at a tipping point. And certainly, five months is, is a killer. It's, you know, to not be able to turn the permanent power on a month after you're going to occupy the building, I don't think is, is going to work. And we've got a lot of work that, that needs to be done ahead of that. But again, we're, we're working through ways to, to get creative, to try to, you know, condense the backend of that schedule. You know, things like installing ceiling grid ahead of, of all this and having it to where when this power, when we shut the lever on, we can turn all these systems on, get the finishes installed, get the building conditioned and balanced, and hopefully turned over as quick as we can, so.
And the one, the one thing to mention also is, you know, we included contingency in our budget for unforeseen things, which is always a good practice, and so this is definitely unforeseen. And we have talked about cost impacts due to this, and I do not expect any negative cost impacts. You know, we're not going to go over our budget. We have contingency in there to cover it. To be honest, we actually had contingency to work overtime to make sure we got that done in August. If we don't need to use that money, we can maybe use it for some of the options that Abe is looking into to maybe expedite getting a switchgear here, which we understand is a premium cost. If you wanted earlier, you got to pay. But, and the one thing about paying, if we're going to pay to get a switchgear here by a certain date, we want to guarantee it's going to be here and not pay money and it shows up next spring, so. And there's a lot of hallmark the electrical engineer and electrical contractor have to do when we present them an option and say, "Here's an option. Will this work?" They got to validate that, yeah, we can make that work, or not. So, we're trying to get, sort through all those answers. Any questions for us?
I guess you guys feel, feel pretty confident if, if we choose the drop ship option that, you know, the engineers and things will be able to work out those other components and, and make it work?
Well, the preliminary reports we have are that we, we think it will work. The, the issue is we're just scrambling, trying to get all this information. You know, normally, this, this process, we have a design, we get a full set of submittals, our electrical contractors and engineer go through all these things and make sure that they're going to work with the various systems. And keep in mind, this, this switchgear that's delayed is just one part of a larger switchgear order that contains multiple items. The item that's actually being delayed is the main switch between the primary and, and the main panel in the building. So preliminary indications are positive. But, you know, before we pull the trigger on that, we, we really want to make sure that this thing's going to work. We, we, that's priority number one. So, as of now, we, we think it's a viable option, and we're going to continue to, to entertain that until we find out otherwise.
Kind of like working a jigsaw puzzle with a few pieces.
It's not just a jigsaw puzzle. You're making your own pieces as you go. But it-
They get you most of the pieces. Three or four, they will get you sometime.
The last four pieces cost a lot of money and, and cost a lot of time. But again, we're, this is just, you know, our team out there. I mean, we, we just set the rooftop mechanical units today. And we, we, we've been discussing this issue internally for about a week with Skanska, just to verify that this was indeed going to happen. Because unfortunately, construction every day, it seems like you get some news that, that's going to derail things. But we, we haven't even communicated this to the construction team. There's people out there working right now. So, I'm sure it's, it's going to be a letdown to them. We've, we've put a lot of hard work in. We've got a good team. I think we have a good plan. But we're just going to have to roll with the punches and do the best we can with it.
I'm sure you guys have, but have, I'm sure you've probably looked into other vendors to try to get these and other manufacturers, and it's not just Eaton, it's Siemens and-
Correct. And, you know, it's, it's hard to kind of make that change at the 11th hour. But I think Curtis, in your memo, there's a, there's a notice that essentially across, you know, Siemens, Square D, all these manufacturers are having this same issue. The problem is, even if we could go back to the eight to 10 weeks and start a new order with Siemens, that's delaying the project eight to 10 weeks, which, you know, we were due to be in here early August. I don't think it's going to help to be in here early October. I mean, that's, that's the problem. We were just backed up against this date, and any direction we go, I just don't see it working at this point. But yes, to answer your question, we're, we're pursuing multiple ops, even within the quick ship program itself, to try to do anything we can.
Any other questions for Mr. Ellsworth or Mr. Quisenberry?
Mr. Hicks, as you are aware, and the Board is aware, we spoke with Mr. Quisenberry and Mr. Ellsworth last week, and it's been on a running race since then, late last week. Just to provide a little bit of background, when we first heard this, we immediately contacted Audrey Schuhlenberger, who is the project manager with the Corps. Our first thought was, what, how does this impact the Corps funding? And so immediately, we contacted her on Friday, and today I forwarded you a response from her that basically, it is good news. And she thanks us for letting us, them know. But to the best of our understanding, and I'm quoting, "We do not anticipate funding issues at this time." So that was great news. We were concerned that we were under a deadline for the funding from the Corps. We were, you know, all sorts of things. You start thinking about it three o'clock in the morning, about all the things that could happen. Our next major concern was then, you know, how is this going to impact the construction contract? And I think Mr., both Mr. Quisenberry and Mr. Ellsworth have stated that with the contingency fund, that it should not impact the contract. And so our next, after informing the Corps and informing our, our own board members, then we also contacted the county administrator, and we also contacted board members, board supervisor members to inform them of this and to let them know that we had, we saw no impact on the challenges for that. They are, in other words, they're not going to be responsible for additional funding for the building. It is all in the contract. So that was kind of a, a good news to share with them. Since yesterday morning, we've been in kind of a fast track. Yesterday morning, we finished talking with all of our School Board members. Mr. Ellsworth joined me in a conversation with our county administrator, and then an email was sent to the Board of Supervisors. This morning, we met with our central office, Board of, I'm sorry, Directors, and then with our administrative staff, informed them of this, and then sent out an email immediately to our staffs in all of our schools and letting them know in our school division what is happening. So, we've kind of been on a fast track, trying to make sure that we go through the appropriate protocols, and, and we've shared with everyone in a timely manner what is happening. Tomorrow afternoon, I am meeting with the Sandlake Elementary staff. I know they have questions, and so I want to be able to be available for them and answer their questions. I'm also meeting Friday with the Irvington Elementary School staff with that potential of joining the new elementary school. So, it's been a busy week, and I know it's also been a busy week for you, and I thank you for your time and your willingness to meet with us almost at a, at a short notice. As far as this delay, you know, I've shared this, but when I spoke, when we spoke with Abram and Curtis, they sounded and looked like they do right now. I think they would have rather done anything than have to share us, share this news with us. So we found ourselves trying to encourage them that it's going to be okay. I still believe that this will be okay. This is something we can't control, but I know, as I've talked with our administrators, that sometimes these things work out for the best anyway. And so we're, we're holding on to that, and we're believing that. We know that right now, as we work through this, that the most frustrating thing is that we don't know the answers. And people want to know the answers. When are we going to move in? With, will this quick ship work? Will it, will it not work? You know, all the things that, that the Board has to decide in the next several days and the second, in the week, next week. So there's more questions to what we have answers. But whatever it takes, I know that Mr. Quisenberry and Mr. Ellsworth and all of us, we're committed. Whatever it takes, we're going to get it done. And so right now, we're just working through what all it's going to take. But we will get there. With the additional classrooms that will be completed next year, we will have more flexibility for more students to attend the new elementary school. And I think that's been the hope of, of every board member that I've talked to here. And so perhaps that was what all of this is about. We also want to mention that in the Senate bill, that has not been passed yet by the Senate, by the General Assembly, but there's $1.8 million for new construction. But if that goes through, then you see the flexibility that that could provide for additional classrooms. So, again, it's just been on a fast pace. We don't know all the answers. We're looking at all the options. It's a domino effect, and I'm sure the dominos will continue to, to be made more focused for us. But I think right now, what, what the Board's main issue appears to be is that we have this piece of equipment that may not be here till September. We may have another option that may be here quicker, but we have no guarantees. Is that correct, gentlemen? And, and so, you know, it's going to be a premium. But do we wait until September and then be told it's not going to be shipped till the spring? You know, it just, it's, but all of those things will become clear as we move forward, so. Questions? Any other comments or questions or anything in that manner? Mr. Hicks or members of the Board? Mr. Mullins, have we covered everything that we've discussed with board members?
I think so. I think, I hope that we've given the Board members and the public enough information to generally understand the nature of the problem. I do, it's, the word "fluid" seems to be used a lot, but it is a very fluid situation, and we do have a meeting next week. And so I'm sure that we will be back in front of you next week telling you what, if anything, we've learned. So, all I can say is, as we go through this, we'll try to, to keep you informed, keep the Board of Supervisors informed, and keep the public informed. And that's really all we can do. And beyond that, I, I think this does validate some of the decisions this Board and the prior School Board has made as far as how we go about procuring things. It is nice, if you're going to have a problem like this, to have a local contractor that has a reputation of, of honesty and fair dealing to work with. And it's nice to have a construction manager that happens to be part of a multinational, you know, company you know, company that can help you understand the bigger picture and validate what you're being told. So it's a test. We don't like being here, but I think we're in pretty good shape, and we should all take comfort that we've got money in the budget to deal with this, and it's just a matter of working the problem. And so that's what we'll do.
Glad to hear that, thanks.
Well, I think it's almost amazing that in the climate we've got now, that we're only a ship, the gear is the only thing that we've not been held up on.
But we've still got time for that to change.
We don't want, we're not...
We don't want that.
No, no.
Don't break my heart.
Thank you, gentlemen.
When you look at what we've been able to do and, you know, to Mr. Mullins, I mean, it's been a collaborative effort, and, you know, we had some delays on the front end with permitting, and we were able to add some scope and add some classrooms and throughout this, we've dealt with this pandemic, and we've been able to dodge these big bullets. So we've had problems, but unfortunately, our number came up here. But I just want to reiterate that, you know, we're going to do everything we can, and as quick as we get information, we're going to try to communicate that to you guys and disseminate that to the best of our ability and just work the problem. You know, deal with what we have at hand and try to come out with the best outcome.
Thank you, Amber.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Sure. So our next agenda item is the overview of Irvington Elementary School's transition with Sandlick Elementary to the new elementary school. Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Hicks, at this time, I have no new further information than what was presented at the March meeting. With this information now, we, our focus has changed. It appears that in August of 2022, we will open up all three elementary schools and have what we currently have now. That, I'm still waiting, as Mr. Ellsworth has heard me say, I'm still waiting for the miracle of the parting of the Red Sea. And so that, you know, whatever, I'm still waiting that. But if that does not come, and there's another path to this, then we are, our focus is changing. Some of our focus will now be on staffing for the three elementary schools. It will also be on providing stability to those students and to those staff members. It will be, the domino effects may be reviewing some of our, the calendar for the next school year, is that an option of beginning school a week early or not? There's just a lot of questions, and we're not going to decide all those questions today, of course. We have next week. But as of this time, to answer your question, we are just not prepared, nor did we think it was appropriate to move forward on staffing or any of those types of things until we know more about this situation and as we get closer to the actual opening of the school.
Any questions regarding the proposed transition? Okay. Hearing none, our next agenda item is public comments on the transition of Sandlick and Irvington Elementary School to the new elementary school. The floor is now open to public comment. If you would like to make a comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and speed, and you will have five minutes for your comments. Mr. Hackney, would you please read the public comments? And Ms. Martin, will you be our timekeeper?
The time for public comment will be designated on the meeting agenda during which the public may comment on issues related to public education. The Dixon County School Board believes that the citizens of the county should be heard and that this is an acceptable format for receiving public comment. After the public comment section of the meeting is closed, the public shall not be allowed to participate in general board member discussions regarding agenda items. Public participation with the board members regarding agenda items can be disruptive, and the practice is prohibited by Robert's Rules of Order. It is a desire of the school board to treat each member of the public fairly and equally. Allowing one member to, one individual to participate while excluding others is unfair. The board may hold such public hearings as may be necessary to allow the public to more fully express their concerns, or the board may place the public comment section of any meeting at the end of the meeting to allow additional comments. While we do not wish to restrict the free expression of opinion, we feel that certain restrictions may be necessary so that order and reasonable standards of decorum may be maintained. We ask that the following standards be adhered. The speaker will be recognized by the chair. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Speakers will refrain from the use of vulgarity or profanity and will avoid negative or embarrassing comments directed toward specific children or students. Board members should not respond to issues presented by speakers unless clarification is necessary. Matters of concern raised under public comment will be referred to the proper official for investigation and future board consideration if necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Hackney. I know we've got a few folks who have signed up for public comment.
Well, my name's Glenn Arwood, and I've talked with you.
You've got some things to pass around, eh?
While you all were looking at them and them were being passed around, I'll touch on what this is. I talked to Haiti Robinson. I'd actually called the school board office to get a number to the Virginia Department of Education to go over the top of Haiti Robinson. Haiti come on the phone, and she asked me what the problem was. I told Haiti what the problem was. Y'all have got a problem in Ridgeview High School. That problem is being presented to you all now. Y'all can look at them, text messages. A girl was passed out that was never checked on in the classroom. The girl was passed out in the bathroom. The girl was never took to a nurse. There was never a teacher checked on her. Passed out in the floor, in the hallways. She couldn't even climb the stairwell. There was never, nobody checked on this child. She is underage. I told Haiti Robinson that this was going on in your school system. She informed me that if this was going on in your school system, wouldn't they be parents calling her office? Wouldn't they be parents knocking on her door to talk to her? I can grant you, this is not going on in my school system. I told her, when I showed up at child school board meeting, I will have my proof. There was an investigation launched. I have not talked to the Board of Education no more. I will get in contact with them tomorrow. Karen Martin sent me a letter. I received it Saturday against one of the ex-schoolteachers, and there was nothing found on that one. I don't know if this is still being looked into. But guys, where's the teachers? Y'all bringing these elementary school kids into a situation like this, and the parents is not even aware of it? And y'all putting these elementary kids, special needs kids, in this situation, and there's nothing done? Instead of worrying about a school system and building a new school on this ground up here that y'all have no control of in the high school that needs to get under control first? Let's worry about that first. Read the text messages. Read the papers. I thought I killed you because she overdosed. The girl gave her coricin. The teacher's never done nothing. They never took the kid to a nurse's station. She laid in the floor, unconscious. They took pictures. They threw it around on social media. But where was your teachers? Where was your teachers? Where was, where was the people that's supposed to have been here for these kids? It's being done in the hallway. They're bringing alcohol in your school. They're bringing drugs into your school. But it still is, you want to bring elementary students into this situation in the back door. There is y'all's proof. How much more proof do you need to get help? Does somebody have to die in y'all's hands before something can be done? I don't know what else needs to be done. I've got y'all's proof. Now tell me it's not in your school system. There's your proof. You're not here for the kids. You're here for the money. You're here for the glory. You're not here for these kids. This goes to show you. I told you when I come face to face with you, I would have my proof. There's my proof. There's a mother that wants to speak to.
Thank you, Mr. Arwood. Ms. Plaster?
That's my child laying in the bathroom floor. Nobody checked on her. She was in class, and she couldn't even text. If you read the text messages, she could not even text. She couldn't climb the stairs. You see her face, passed out in the bathroom floor. I was not even aware of it. When I went through her phone, I was speechless. There are things on her phone that you wouldn't even believe that I found on her phone. That's just the tip of the iceberg, what you see right there. What's going on in this school over here, you would not believe. This is her first year in this school. I brought her here for a better education. She's the new kid in school, and she did things that she shouldn't do just to fit in. Peer pressure, and I'm to blame for part of it because she sneaked out at night to party to get fit in with the crowd. But the vaping, the drinking, all that started in your school, and your school failed her. It almost killed her. And I don't know that I will let her come back to this school next year. I just don't know. It's, it's, I don't know. She almost died. She took 17 pills, and she could not even function. She was passed out in the hallway. She was passed out in the classroom. She was passed out in the bathroom, and no one informed me of anything that this was going on. She was in a car wreck, flipped over on its top because she sneaked out to a party. And all this started from this school. She was never in any trouble until she started in this school. All because I wanted a better education for her.
Ms. Plaster, I'd like to introduce you to Karen Martin. Ms. Martin is our compliance officer, and she is going to, if you don't mind, go with you now so that you can share your story with her. Our SROs are also here.
I've talked to the SRO officer.
Excuse me?
I have talked with the SRO officer.
Okay. And, but let's begin that. So if you don't mind just going with Ms. Martin at this time, and, thank you. And if you could please share this information with her. Her name is Ms. Karen Martin, okay?
Mr. Arwood, when she finishes looking at your stuff, you can get, just get that back right there, okay?
Okay. And I appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry to go.
No problem. All right. So this concludes our open session. At this time, we will now go into closed session. Closed session pursuant to 2.2-3711A, 1. Paragraph A of the Code of Virginia, there will be a closed session for the purpose of employment issues related to discussion or consideration of specific individuals for employment as head football coach, part-time cook, and attendance clerk pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, 1. 2, to consult with legal counsel regarding the investment of public funds associated with school construction and consultation regarding actual or probable litigation, along with consultation regarding specific matters requiring legal advice pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, 6, 7, and 8 of the Code of Virginia. Is there a motion to go to closed session? So moved. So, all in favor? Say aye. All aye.
Do I hear a motion to come out of closed session?